Welcome. Today is Thursday, April sixth, and it's about six oh five. It is my honor and pleasure to open and first board meeting of the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four iteration of the Mount Vernon School Board. As this is the first meeting, we start by you by creating an organization, building the organization, which will be the chair position, and then the chair takes over and fills the other positions. I think I just wrote about that a little bit in board notes. It's a lot of need to do that. And as you think about serving as the board chair, the relationship between the board chair, vice chair, and superintendent is important. We've met regularly monthly, just to talk about things and develop the agendas. And there's a meeting of the board for chairs, right? Four chairs as a committee. I mean, on that's on-call stuff when things come up. But it has been wonderful for me to work with Jess and Sarah this year as mentor. But I would like to open the nominations for chair of the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four Mount Vernon School Board. Do we have any names for nomination?
I'd like to nominate Peter.
Do we have a second? Seconded by George Torres. Now it's open for discussions. Peter, are you willing to accept that nomination?
I am.
Any discussion about Peter serving as the chair or the Mount Vernon Board?
Nope. Other than thanks very much. Yes. We appreciate your service.
Okay. So as there is no discussion, I will take a vote. All those in favor of Peter Eckhoff serving as the Chair of the Mount Vernon School Board two thousand twenty three, twenty four? It is unanimous. Congratulations. And Peter, thank you for your make a notice.
I've got as many votes tonight as I did to get elected. That's the truth.
So I will now turn it over to you. Let me suggest vice chair. And then I think there's some positions that I took from the trouble cards in the notes if you want to follow that or and if there's questions, you can always table. The urgency tonight is really the chair and vice chair. Maybe on that you can look and ask questions.
So at this point, I'll take nominations for vice chair for the two thousand twenty three, twenty four school board. Anybody have nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jessica.
Anybody have second? Any discussion?
Awesome.
Vote for Jess Pinkley as vice chair again, returning.
I'm fine. Yeah.
I think that's acid.
The next position is secretary. Do we have any nominations for the secretary of the Mount Vernon School Board for twenty three, twenty four?
I'd like to nominate George Torres.
Do we have a second for that? George, are you willing to serve as secretary?
Someone will explain to me my responsibility issue.
Any discussion? Amongst other board members about George as secretary?
Congratulations on her election as one of the rich.
A little preemptive.
No, his election back to the board.
Back to the board.
The back to the board.
That is involved with being secretary. Like what has we got us recently? It's mostly keeping track of non-public. And there's a form, so it's really easy. And then we have to give it to me.
All right.
She will remind you as she has often had to do for me.
Okay, all those in favor of George Torres being secretary for twenty two, twenty four of the Mount Vernon School Board? Yeah. Vote is four, five to nothing. And congratulations, George. Thank you. I am going to postpone and wait on the appointment of committee responsibilities. I think we have a lot on our plate right now. I think we should postpone for probably at least the next meeting or two before we.
We need someone.
We do have to sign a manifest.
Yeah, otherwise.
Is that a position?
It's a board elected position, authorizing authorization assignment.
So do we have any volunteers to serve as the siders of them? Is it weekly or monthly?
It's like every other week.
Every other week?
Yeah.
To sign for the manifest?
It's electronic.
Yeah. Yep. I do it.
Okay, Sarah Lawrence for one. And I probably feel like I should probably be on there too. So I will self-nominate.
We need policy in case we need to, because I need a meeting soon or okay, skip.
Do we need to vote on those manifest people?
Just to.
Yeah, but we need to vote.
Yeah.
All right. So first, we're doing Sarah Lawrence at first. There's a need for signing of the manifest for the twenty three, twenty four school year. All those in favor?
Do we need a formal nomination and second?
Oh, you're fine.
So it's Sarah and Peter?
And the second nomination is P. Deckoff for second signature on the manifest. All those in favor?
Perfect. Thank you.
No, thank you for.
So we'll get you set up and you'll receive those electronically. Thank you. Done that. Thanks for having me. Yeah. Have you ever done it too?
Yeah.
Great. Good.
Yeah.
And just, there are, I, we're thinking of doing a training if you think you need it, like there's a chat function in there. So it's a little more up to date. So yeah, so that we're going to try to organize that.
Some new speech.
Here's some new features. So it's nice. You can, and so, you know, we'll do a little mini training. It won't take long. We could even do it on Zoom. But it's a nice way to be able to put questions in for staff and we all are tagged on it. We can see it right in there. And then we can tag, you know, if you have a specific question on technology, we can tag Ryan. So it's a nice way instead of swirling emails all over the place. So.
So having said that, I'm going to need some training on some other elements of this. So I'll reach out to you and maybe you do it at the same time.
Yeah.
Be pretty easiest for me. There is probably a speed. Simply a little add-ons.
Yes.
That's pretty simple.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is we're going to have a presentation on the second grade ready go gram in Melbourne Village School.
Yeah. Well, second grade. Switched to her. Yeah. So on Chikay and Kim, our two second grade teachers are here to speak about second grade.
So I'm going to share a Reader's Theater presentation. We had all the second grade students working on different plays and they were fairy tales and folktales. And it's out there. We've never done such an activity with them before. We had actually wrote a play in class and they loved it. So we thought there's so many great things that they can get out of doing a play and working together that we would make groups.
Right. And we chose to not just keep it my class, her class, but we blended both classes so that they were working with kids that they don't get to work with every day. So it was a nice blending of different groups of students that we don't always see working together, which was really nice. They, it, I saw new friendships develop in that short few weeks that we did it. So that was really, it was nice for me to see too. That first slide, that's just a picture of a young lady making props. And we let them pretty much to their own.
We assigned the, we assign the plays to the groups just based on the kids that were in the groups. And then they were in charge of choosing parts and working together to decide who is going to take on which role. And then they were also in charge of creating their own props. And
Excellent.
We're good for the second slide. Yes. There we go. So these were reading standards that we covered while during the Reader's Theater. So they, you know, had their reading through the plays and learning their parts. They needed to understand the point of view of a character so that they could portray that character. The text structure was different than what they're used to reading. The fiction that they're typically reading is not structured in the play. So that was new for them. And then describing character settings and events. They had to understand what was happening so that they could create their props and the scenery. And know what's happening in the play so that they could present it appropriately. And then, of course, when they presented their information, they were covering speaking and listening to builds of that information and ideas.
Which then worked really well when I worked studying practices. We had everyone to do with study practices that we work on all year. And it was really one of the first times we had creativity in this manner. Before it had been creativeness that they had done themselves, but this was within a group. How did they work within a group? How, how could they work through who's going to be mama bear? You know, it wasn't just the only girl in the group got to do that. Sometimes it didn't work out as smoothly as they thought. So it was fun to watch that. Never mind the collaboration and communication skills that came out of this. Self-direction speaks first, because we really stood back. It was one of these wonderful teaching moments where I wasn't doing the whole lot, but I was doing a lot. It, it, it didn't involve me talking or me presenting. It involved me just questioning. I would drop a nugget at a group, let them simmer on it for a minute and walk away. What did they do with that nugget? You know, how are you going to portray the grandma in this story? Has it, what's it look like? And then I would walk away. What's that going to look like? You guys figure it out. Of course, I was watching when you were doing, because you never know. But it was nice to see that kind of self-direction come more from them and they took ownership of it. Yeah. So when we did the presentations, which you'll see the snippets of it was one of the most fun things I think we've done. They loved it. Yeah.
How long is the unit?
We kind of snuck this in because we were between Lucy units. We had finished unit three and it was right before vacation, like those two weeks before vacation. I just couldn't start in a unit and then leave it. So I thought, let's do something really fun. And let's just envelop a lot of things that we knew we needed to hit upon. What a great opportunity. And it turned out to be the perfect time. The timing was amazing for us. Because, yeah, it was kind of a self-made.
Organic. Yeah.
Yeah.
Read it our own little thing here.
Next one.
Yes, please. So these were just, this is just a list of the plays that they performed. Some of them we've heard of, some of them we might not have. Some of them were folktales and fairy tales. The picture is Jack and the Beanstalks and the props that they made. And then go to the next slide. We have just little clips. They're very short. Hopefully the sound works, you know. I think you have. Yeah, can you press play down there?
Still good.
And this is FYI, it was pajama day. That's why I even fit down with it.
He does fit with what he's got.
But it is pajama. You can see they have props that we hung up on the board and, you know, the masks. And so they really took on the characters.
And this, this group had at first couldn't make a decision to save themselves. But then, as they just dropped in, I get more. They got it all together and they turned out to be one of the most together groups. Once they just sat down and listened to each other, because that was their problem. Everybody talked at the same time. That's not going to work. So it was nice to watch this group for the two-week period.
The next one is a, also a folk tale, the Tiger, the Jackal and the Brahman.
Get the cute cage. It's seven in a year. That, that was just amazing to watch them put this all together. As we said, it wasn't coming from us. And that's cool. Yeah.
Same clip from when they graduated.
The somewhat market.
They need them. So we'll put that on our site. But yeah.
No, what a good and lovely.
Thank you.
Was this the first time that you've done this? Yeah. Now, you need to do it again.
In a minute. At a minute, I would do it again. Absolutely. And I'm not. I know. I was like, no, like, I'm not a free-for-all kind of rule. Let's just do it. That's not in my wheelhouse. It's not my comfort zone. But I loved it. I have to say it pushed me, Chikay, good. Pushing me in my not comfort zone, which I love. So it was just, it was wonderful to watch it happen. I was enthralled every day by watching what these children were doing on their own. You know, they really impressed us. They really stepped up and yeah.
It's so good. It's like crazy good. Crazy good. Just so you know, this is crazy.
Thank you.
While we're looking for head of the transportation, movement, collaboration, cooperation, integration, art. This is just crazy good.
It's amazing how many things we were trying to.
It's a cool way to like expose them to a different type of literature that they don't usually get exposed to it. Because I don't think I read plays until middle school. And not every kid likes reading a regular book. And as long as they're engaged, that seems like the balls. I think that's really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My, my ask would be is
Oh, yes.
moving forward, I don't know. You said you kind of hit a gap in formation. So I don't know whether that gap's always going to exist.
We can kind of make a big house.
I see my boy. I'm looking over here.
No, it's great.
So if we can talk about that as far as down the road. Well, like Steve says, all good stuff. So.
And like we said, I mean, it's something we would definitely take on again as long as we knew we were at a point that was good. I can't just throw it in randomly, but that's just organically. And that's, that's when I think it works the best for this type of.
I think it would be interesting too, is if you took the same group of kids next year, had the same, and obviously changed the place to see what they would do. You know?
Yeah. Yeah. And like, as you know, you're, then you're, we're so small. That's an easy thing for us to share with our great, like, this was a group that really loved plays. Think about that. If you find yourselves in the same spot that we were in, think about that as a little extra something to do.
Christine and I yesterday were talking about educator as innovator, that you you innovated out of a piece of time and you did, and you brought something new. Like this can't make it up.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And thank you both for coming. We really appreciate you being here. Please feel free to sneak outside. Yeah.
So we're up to our first public comment section at six twenty one. Is there anybody? Check. You know, we have a guest tonight. Do you have anybody online still?
No one is on.
No. Okay. So we will come back to that again later in the agenda. And at this point, we welcome an audit presentation for two thousand twenty two. I apologize. I don't know your name. Otherwise I would introduce you. But I'll let Amy take control.
Yeah. So Matthew from Dashon. Okay. So he, their firm did our independent audit this year. And this is their first year working with us. I think we use the firm a while back, but Yep. So you should have a digital file of the audit and the, the, the letters and hard copies. And Matthew's just going to give a brief overview of the process and talk about any findings, which there weren't any happily. And and then open up for questions. Great. So thank you, Matthew.
Okay. So one of the first letters that you will have in front of you will be the governance letter, and that's requires communication from us to the board. And outlines the overall process of the audit itself. And we're required to discuss any new standards that are applicable. So for fiscal year twenty two, a new standard that was applicable is Gatsby Statement eighty seven. Fortunately, for the district, there was nothing that actually applied from that. And to give a quick overview of it is it's a leasing standard. So if there were any sort of copiers that were leased, what ends up happening is that they used to be operating leases where you had a required disclosure that mentioned future payments. Now underneath the new standard, Gatsby says you have to report that as maintainable right to use asset, advertise that, and then pick up a lease liability. Oh, I believe when we talked to Katie, she said that might be something that would possibly be applicable going forward, but for the current year, that doesn't apply. So there's that. And then in the governance letter, if we had any internal control deficiencies, we would address that to the board there and make reference to our separately issued internal control letter. As Amy said, we actually didn't have any internal control findings during the course of the audit. And then if there were any material audit adjustments that we proposed, that would also be within that communication letter. And I actually popped in a little bit the engagement before coming here. The only entry that we had, it wasn't a material entry related to the student activities of the district. So two years ago, Gatsby had statement number eighty four. It dealt with fiduciary activities and essentially the student activity funds, which used to be fiduciary activity. Yeah, we kind of redefined and said, you have administrative control. So they're no longer a fiduciary activity. So they get reported within your governmental funds now. And the way that the the S A U office kind of manages the student activity funds is you have your cash account and then everything for the, they track the individual activities. And it's all within basically a liability account set up for each activity. And what we had to have essentially Katie do for us was take out all the activity that was flowing through there and summarize it in the level of what were the total deposits, what were the total checks written out? And then we took what she gave us and then cross-reference that to the beginning bank reconciliation, the ending bank reconciliation, and everything clear in the bank account during the year. So that we get a level of comfort knowing that what we had provided to us from Katie was actually the activity that went through. So that's actually, I'm going to be honest, and that's fairly common for a lot of the districts that actually have utilized divisions as they run it through a liability account. So we can actually track it by individual activity versus if you just had revenues and expenditures. And then the difference between that would essentially roll up into a fund balance amount. And unless you're taking the time to year over year, say, what would my change for each activity in the posted journal on fund balance account? So it's, it is a very common thing that we can approach for the government of the school district. As I discussed with the, the internal control letter. If we don't find anything, we're not technically required to communicate that to you. But our firm stances that we kind of, we always do that because that is something that everybody likes to be able to publish and say, okay, here's our internal control letter. And we say that we don't find any material weaknesses. You can't legally say is that we did not identify any significant deficiencies. Believe that it says that they may exist, but they were not identified. So just the kind of overall view of that. And then what's most important to the board, to the public, is the opinion on the district's financial statements. The district had an unmodified opinion on its financial statements for each individual opinion unit, which for the district would be that we'll check for, I say. So there's the governmental activities, which is more similar to an overall business. Where you have it with long-term nature, your capital assets, any related debt. Those are everything that goes on to those. Those are, you know, looking at the financial statements. Those are what is referred to as at the top, exhibit A and exhibit B, the statement of net position and a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes of net position. And then you have your governmental funds, which are there's specific criteria to evaluate as, you know, whether or not what gets reported as a major fund for the district. And then if something exceeds that threshold, it's required to be presented as a major fund. So in the current year, the district had the general fund, the food service fund, the grants fund, and then everything that is not a major fund gets aggregated together and is identified as a non-major governmental funds. And we call that basically aggregate remaining funds. So as far as the opinion, unmodified opinion on all the reporting units, which basically means that as far as the numbers that went in here, there's nothing materially misstated. And all the required disclosures that were made within notes of the financial statements are there and there's nothing missing. For the district, if you're, if you're looking at the statement of net position, you'll see that there's a rather large deficit. Nothing to be alarmed about. So Gatsby has statement number sixty eight and statement number seventy five. And statement sixty eight requires you to report your proportionate share of the Hampshire Retirement Scheme's unfunded pension liability. And the same thing with seventy five gets with OPEB. This retirement system is unfunded, plus the single employer OPEB, which is basically it's an implicit rate that is being charged and it generates an actual an actuarially calculated liability. It's not really something you can pay off. And it's, it's because of state law requires old rates. So people who are actually older, you know, their, their rate, if they were to go out and get their own health insurance, would actually be higher than somebody who is, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years old and is on the district's health insurance. So they take that and they calculate and earn what essentially, even though they paid the full cost of the premium. So it's not an actual true cost of district, but they generate this liability. And with those two standards, that actually resulted in roughly a two-point-eight million dollar impact to the district's overall net position. And if you look at it, the district has a two-point-one million dollar deficit. And if you really want more information on those, you can happily go to notes five and six in the financial statements. And there's plenty of information there. Next thing that's kind of really important to the board, to the public, is it's page twenty six in the financial statements. And this is a it's a budgetary comparison schedule and for the district. The important part is a cumulative, it was roughly three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars underneath its approved budget, which was roughly five-point-eight million dollars. And that essentially represents a five-point-six favorable, five-point-six percent favorable variance. Which potentially on a year-to-year basis, you have some level of encumbrances at the end of the year, which are kind of taken out of. They're they're added to your gap based expenditures, but then the prior year encumbrances come out. Gets you to where your budgetary fund balance is at the end of the year. And I can't remember off the top of my head, does the district have the. What used to be the two and a half percent fund balance potential? Okay, so you don't. So it's basically the the unassigned fund balance right from here is essentially what. Is used as the tax rate in the subsequent year.
And is that, that's not the the transferred expendable funds?
Yes, the other side of the month would be here would be net of any commitment. To the fund balance voted from the March twenty twenty two annual meeting. That would go in during your F Y twenty three.
Yeah, this is the page that Amy and I are trying to look at and track.
Yeah.
So like the biggest area in fund balance based on this audit is instruction. Instructional services, we have to dig in and figure out what's going, because this is. You know, this is what we estimate writing to the tax rate, we spend more time on the tax rate this year. And we have to unpack what happened, why, you know, what happened to that two forty?
So I believe there was a vacancy last year. And that was. That was less expensive than that. So I think that was one of the major reasons. Yeah, for about half the year. So the long term stuff. Rate was lower than the teacher who left. And regular regular tuition was also rejection was less than budgeted. And yes, it makes it a vacancy. So those are the major reasons. Yeah.
Figure out where it is and figure out how to.
Yeah.
That once long term sub would have would not have accumulated to forty one.
Thank you. It's great. Everybody have any? Question? No one else has? So. You have mentioned Gatsby eighty seven, so that's. Government's version of the A S C forty two, the leasing standard?
Yes.
All right, okay.
Some can imagine there's some differences.
Yeah.
Right, the way that it actually gets reported, but yes, it's.
Right.
Similar concept, FASB started with that process and then kind of got pushed back.
Yeah.
From, oh yeah, basically businesses is publicly traded companies. And then Gatsby kind of just took it, ran with it and jumped the gun. I'll be honest, the the biggest school district that I do an audit for. The net impact on their statement of net positions. For having to jump through all the hoops and do all that work was about twenty six thousand dollars.
Yeah. I can't imagine it would be material here.
No, it's.
Pretty familiar with the standards, yeah, the implementation will. Crazy, but they, are they deferring recognizing? The asset liability, because I didn't see it on there, or did I just miss it?
No, so the, when we came out for the audit, we talked to Katie, inquired to see whether or not there were any actual leases that were in place. For the fiscal year. She said, no, the district actually owns all of its copiers outright, but it is something that, you know, and that is the most common one that we see. Is that there are copier leases and then what we will end up doing is we'll do an evaluation. As to is it material or not? So that's something that could come into play for F Y twenty three. Is whether or not the leases are material to the district and should they be reported in the district's financial statements.
Thank you for that. On note for the changes in long term obligations, I just have a quick question. So the compensated absence payable, is that sick time payable back to? Teachers and it says there is no amount due one year, so they they basically expire.
Well, so the amount that would be due in one year would be, is if the district knew at June thirtieth. Whether or not somebody had given notification of intent to retire, which would trigger, it's actually due within your next operating cycle. So the listing that we got, we inquired and said, has anyone provided notification of retirement? And we weren't provided with a listing of anyone who had given notification at June thirtieth. So we didn't put on, you know, break out a current portion. If if there was a current portion, you would have seen it broken out on the statement of deposition exhibit A. So we try to do our best to make sure that the. What you see on the face of the financial statements, you can actually trace to somewhere in the notes to the financial statements. Getting a little bit harder with some of the municipalities because of the size of the statement of definition itself. With all the different items that go into it, whether it's, you know, your lease obligations, your compensated absences, your bonds payable. Your, what was previously capital leases is now finance purchase obligation. Does the actual statement of net position, we've talked about internally, if it's, if it gets big enough. Do we want to break it onto two pages? We don't necessarily like to do that because. Feel like you should be able to look at it and see everything. But unfortunately with Gatsby and their ever changing, you know, standards and reporting. It ends up maybe a little bit or unbeluded with everything.
I I guess my last question, on the pension liability. Isn't that carried at the state? The district carries unfortunate liability?
No, the state doesn't own it, we own it.
They don't.
Okay, state contribution to pension liability, zero.
Okay, so the contributions, so.
There was a Gatsby change a while ago, we had to put, we had to report the funded liability in the pension sixty eight, which would have been. I want to say twenty fourteen.
Sounds too go crazy. Yeah, so the the pension liability has been going down a lot this couple of years because the discount rate, the discount rate has been going up, so drama with it. The life, so has our funding changed with that as well? Are we?
Go to the actuarial rate or require the actuarial rate every.
Right, right, there's a minimum.
It went down last year, which is crazy.
Yeah, a- and that's, it sets a floor, you could pay more than that if you're, you know. Because you got to be within it, but I don't know, within Gatsby, maybe a little bit different.
Okay, so here's what I can explain. The way that the New Hampshire retirement system allocates out the pension liability to everybody. Based off of member contributions in during the measurement period. For the district, the way that everything basically works is the standard is written and it allows you to be. Want to say it's a year and a day. Behind, so everything that you're seeing in here is based off of the measurement date ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
Right, right.
And if you go to page thirty, this actually gives you, it's a ten year, Gatsby requires a ten year historical trend analysis. And it's a ten year analysis for disclosures, the same thing for O P E V disclosures. And if you look, you can see that, okay, the, you know, the district's proportionate share, which is the second column in. It's kind of creeped up a little bit over the years. That is entirely in relation to the contributions that the district has to make. So with the retirement system increasing what teachers, what the district has to contribute on behalf of teachers. You know, and payroll going up overall, all of a sudden, your amount's going up. Other other districts, you know, if if their payrolls go down or municipalities, if, you know, the police are higher rates. Didn't go up as much as teachers, your your percentage is going to go up, you're going to end up reporting a larger proportionate share. Of the O P E V liability. So that's essentially how everything gets allocated out. And if you look to the far right hand column, that will actually show you the planned funded position. And I can tell you that the most recent one that actually just came out. Where's the end of last month, middle to end of last month? I believe it was back down around sixty seven, sixty eight percent funded.
But in June twenty one, it was funded at seventy two percent?
Wow. So if you look. So from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, they decreased discount rate by a half percent. So that had a massive impact on. What the actual net pension li- like the liability that they're calculating, it had a massive increase in the overall. Amount of gifts there, the. The economy and the like basically the stock market, what they're invested in. Essentially, their assets were valued at a certain amount and that's why when you look at the end of June thirty, twenty twenty one. You know, before we kind of came back down to reality, I guess, would be the the stock market is. It looked, it looked like it was in a really good position. And that's one of the reasons why now it's back down to the, you know, I think it's sixty, sixty seven, sixty eight percent, I believe is where it's at. As the most recent valuation.
Yeah, but I think the big concern is on the liability side, because the liability side is the one that. As you're looking at those, that's what the outstanding life, so.
It's not something that the district can actually pay off.
Right, right.
So that's.
It's just, it's just a Gatsby requirement. You know, when it's, when it's, when it's paid off?
When?
Twenty so four years?
So they talked about this at. The intro G F O A last year, and I think even the year before that. Their plan was when they started this, I want to say it was back in like two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. It was supposed to be a thirty years before they were fully funded, but if you take a look over the last hard many years. Not, it's not getting there. No.
It's going to be longer, you think it's going to be longer?
Before, unless they can, I think rates decreased slightly for the most recent fiscal year. You know, and unless they increase those rates, and this is all based off of, if you look at the historical contribution rates. You look at what they were in the nineties and the early two thousands. There, I would say, it's, it was bad contributions, state killer. Yep, bad contribution in for all the municipalities with all these benefits that were promised. And now all of a sudden, you're you're starting to realize that they don't have. Necessarily the assets to be funded a hundred percent, so how do they get there as they end up having an increase in contribution rates? Which basically trickle down to all the municipalities.
There was a moment where there was a group of talking about borrowing. At the three percent rate to pay it all off at once. And it would save billions of dollars, but in order to do that, they looked into it, you'd have to have every school board, every select board in the state all vote for it. Which is impossible, but it was fun to think about for a while.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Thanks.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, George is always good for.
One question I did have, I'm skimming this, I didn't study it, I'll be honest with you. The operation and maintenance of the plant coming in at a deficit of one fifteen, what drove that, you know? Was that like leaking ceilings and?
What page are you on?
An over, overspend of one fifteen. Yeah, I'm sure it was just facility stuff.
That was, is that the well and the well pump? That that was on point twenty two? But we didn't have time.
Yeah.
For a day or two, we had to cancel.
Yeah.
Yeah, sense.
The water, yeah. That sounds right.
Well, and then there was also the day I was here and we've been frustrated.
Yes.
That was fun, but that was. Not because of the well, it was sort of the well, but it was. We had a running toilet that ran the well now.
Yeah.
We have everything in this. Steve, I did notice one of the footnotes that said that you guys change your capitalization. It's just out of curiosity. Any other questions or comments about what we just observed? So up next is our consent agenda items, one through seven, I'll just read the headers. The principal's report, the Amherst Middle School principal's report, the facilities update from Mount Vernon. Our co-curricular report from Mount Vernon, policy G B G B A, the use of automated external defibrillators. Number six, the March third, twenty twenty three minutes of our meeting. And then number seven is our E L A curriculum. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding any of the agenda items in the concern?
And I'm happy to fill in for Tom, he had a family obligation this evening. So if I have some notes, if you want me to share highlights or have any questions, have me to answer them.
I'd be interested in hearing the highlights and notes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wondered how the math night went.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Yeah, that's in my notes, I'll speak to that too.
So if you pick up dates, we had a really great read across Mount Vernon week. We had an author, Vivian Kirkfield, who actually lives locally here in Bedford. She came to speak to students and I got to be here as well when she was here, it was great, we're able to use some grant funds. To support her in coming and talking to our students and we had her change her presentation, so she focused deeply on writing. And the the process of writing and being a writer, just to really, that's been a focus of ours this year on writing, so really to grab them. And we're excited, Gordon Korman, who's a really famous author, but using grant funds again to bring him. And he'll be coming in May to talk to the older students. So Vivian talked to Kate three and Gordon will be speaking with fourth through sixth grade students. And kids are really excited, they were like cheering and clapping when we told them that Gordon would be coming to visit. So that's some exciting literacy pieces, and we've also had our book, Bookopoly, which is our reading challenge. And again, our guest readers, some of you, I can't recall, Sarah, you were here for being a guest reader. That Friday, along with Steve, oh, were you just, didn't stick my head? Also, our math night really successful, not a huge turnout, but the people who came were blown away and so excited. Our teachers did an incredible job presenting, Charlene was unbelievable organizing the event, planning the whole thing. Supporting the teachers in their presentations and what was most exciting, with so many parents asked for more. They said, I love this, this makes so much sense, I wish I learned math this way, now I understand what's coming home with my child. And then, hey, do this again, I want deeper, I want more, so that was really nice. So that went really well and the other note, which is on the agenda for May. But Charlene would like to do the math club carnival again, so it's on the list for future enrichment stipends for one of our clubs. And then just a few other quick updates, sixth grade transition, we're already started, starting working with A M S and some of our transition pieces. Just this Wednesday, our students took the Orleans Hannah Algebra Readiness Assessment, which is part of our math placement process. So it was this week and Chris Beatty, our school counselor down at A M S has already come up. He has a therapy dog, he brought his dog with him, which was really exciting, the kids got to meet the dog, that was a big, a big hit. So they've been working very closely on all of those transition events and they're certainly going to ramp up soon. I know campus around the corner and we're gearing up for that, so I know they're very excited and working closely. And it was great, Kristen, our principal down at A M S was even able to come here for read across Mount Vernon and the kids, I don't know if you heard them. They're very excited to have her. And the only other quick update is that the flood construction repair is totally done. There, I, last time I checked, there was a tiny little hole that was intentionally still in the ceiling, so one little patch still needs to be done to really button everything up. But everything is back to normal and complete the major construction pieces for that. So a few days where, you know, kids were diverted a little bit, but nothing major. And we were joking that our skylight is now closed off because we had a nice little, you know, some light and some nice breeze and some air, but that did get closed off. Uh, and we were joking that our skylight is now closed off, because we had a nice little, you know, some light and some nice breeze and some air, but that did get closed off. Um, so any other question?
There will be a therapy dog training a little bit from the end of the year. Community member who was having a child work on. So you might see that.
Yeah, he's five already now, so, yeah, I wanted to get him started on that.
The therapy dog at A M S has been, like as someone who has a seventh grader transitioning, like. It's been huge for the kids as they're getting used to A M S.
Awesome, yeah, it's um an exciting process, so I um with, I have a mentor essentially that. As a certified, um uh you know, she's certified by the organization to um do the test and then surprise, uh you know, support during. Resupervised site visits before you get certified, so she really, she said to me, well, if you really want to be bringing your dog into the schools, I want to do the site visits in the schools. In the real environment, so I can train and coach and support you in that, so I thought that was kind of exciting work, so. I've kind of held off just because it's, you know, uh uh busy and um but I feel like I just have to jump in and make it happen, so something like, you know, Rita Cross Mount Vernon, I could bring him. Or New Hampshire SAS testing or those kinds of things, so certainly not all the time, but just having the opportunity to have that certified dog and then. Um, see where it might take us, so that's nice, yeah. So and I know Patty has been asking for a while, um for certain, you know, read to a dog. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, and if anyone doesn't know, Norman was um. Uh, supposed to be a seeing eye dog, but he's a career change dog, so he was bred by the seeing eye and uh raised and trained to be a seeing eye dog, so. So that's what the seeing eye calls them, I did not make that up. Not a failure. The legs are too long and he's klutzy and he drags his feet, and you can't have a seeing eye dog that's klutzy, it just doesn't work or noisy. Um, so, yes, so he's a career change, but he um was, he grew up with three little girls. And he is like unbelievable with kids, like my niece pokes him and pulls his ears and pulls his tail and. So he's great, um so that will be an exciting piece uh for this. And I happy to talk about the curriculum, but I I don't have a lot to say, but um it it for the uh fifth and sixth grade curriculum, if you just wanna.
Can I ask one more tiny question about the A M S update, I saw that there was uh intramural basketball or. That some of our kids were able to participate in that?
Oh, actually, I was aware of that.
Yes, yeah, we started intramural basketball.
And so how many of our kids have been getting bussed down? Says that they've been going down on buses.
There were a few, because there was one day um with a little nap, who would that cancel last minute, and the kids still came down, so I I was helping that day, so that's great, I um.
It's great.
Was aware of that, and I think it's a s- a small group, but still um certainly engaged.
They have the opportunity to do that, the timing, that's nice, I was happy to see that.
And what was the gentleman's name that's coming in May, the writing, Gordon?
Oh, Gordon Korman, K O R M A N, um really famous author, um uh his first book he ever wrote, he was. Um, a seventh grade student when he wrote the book and then eventually got it published, so he's gonna be talking about writing. Um, he writes a lot of stories that are engaging for boys, which is really nice, he's a popular author among among boys. And um I think his book, it's about um two seventh grade kids who either get locked in a school or hide out in a school or some. Um, but it kind of an interesting one, and the kids uh were really engaged, so they're actually doing like a pre and post writing assignment tied in to that. For our grant, so the neat activity.
I'm just gonna throw out, I'm looking at Jess too, but. I don't know whether there's something we could do, uh meet the author night here at the school when he's here.
He's only here for a day, um but he's going to a school in Maine after, so he might have time, maybe even like a later after school or evening, I can reach out and see.
Kind of like for parents.
Yeah.
Read or something, maybe the P T A could. Coordinate some, I don't know, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, yeah, let me.
Literacy at home the better. Famous.
Yes, yeah, I, we have a bunch of his books.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's, he is definitely uh um engaging for boys, which I know, yeah. So, yeah, let me find out.
Community, I mean.
Yeah.
Other than the members, because they're even older, like A M S kids that could.
If it comes to be, we should advertise at the local library too.
Yeah.
What, community members know?
Yeah, yeah, let me find out, he seems um really agreeable, you know, at every contact we've had with him. Um, and he was able to schedule, you know, a visit to a school in Maine right after us, so it's very possible that he'd be able to, and it could even be on the. In the night before he comes or.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll find out, but that's a great idea.
Thank you. I gotta scroll back up, I'm sorry.
I have a question about the minute. Just a small question, so I I was trying to decipher, because I missed the last meeting, and I apologize. Um, the situation with the last day of school, and I I don't know if it's calendars changed or not, and I've had some parents expressing they weren't clear. Necessarily, are we, are, I know we had an unexpected disaster of snow, but like, has that changed? So last day, or are we still under the five days, I wasn't sure where we were on on that.
So uh we are going to uh waive the snow days and um days typically that are due to a calamity. Um, you don't make that.
Okay, so we're still under.
Yeah, and we still have enough instructional hours.
Okay.
That we can do that, and then and um and we're working through, I just brought up some process about the non-teacher positions important, so we'll be working through that process.
Is there a process like when, you know, it's considered, okay, we've hit this time of the year, now we can just put the final day of school on the calendar?
Actually, today, I think we have that discussion now.
Oh, okay.
I think in the future, I think in this is, it's, this is, a lot of this is on me and just the rhythm of this year. Um, I think um my recommendation would be August, September, work with N V E A and talk about. Uh extending to the school year for snow days, or not then, um so we don't get trapped as at the end of the year and parents have it, so. Whenever we decide, I think we need to decide September and just say we're making it snow.
Sure.
And the, and then you will have a late, a new school no later than this, but it, you know, it could be five days out now. It was, it was a good process and collaborative, and based on the time of year, I think it was the right decision, but I think um as we look at September and the next year. Instructional time and having, you know, Kevin Chikay, five more days with Kevin Chikay is a good thing, you know, so we'll work on it.
Yeah.
I think that's what we found last, the last meeting was so exciting to have all the math presentation, and we want the kids to have more of that.
Right.
Not the bare minimum of that.
Yeah, and you know, we gotta get away, Sarah, thank you, get away from the minimum number of hours of instruction, that's not what the Amherst. I'm sorry, the Monverde community or the Amherst community or the Southeastern community, none of those communities, we're, we're, Christine and I, we don't work on the minimum.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments of the consent agendas one through seven? Uh, if you mostly do accept, consent agenda one through seven.
Make that motion. To accept.
Anybody?
I'll second.
Second by Jess, all in favor? And we move on to. The grant program assurances from Mr. Chamberlain.
Sure, um and this is just a a quick update in the statutory, so um in my time as 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 soon. As I was, I did for a dozen years before, the um regulations about having the board sign or just be noticed about. The assurances has changed, so what the assurances are, I have to sign penalty of perjury and penalty of all this of my credential. That we meet the federal guideline to accept and implement federal grants, it's uh the the most, we we do, Christine's on, Amy's on, I'm on, Katie's on it. Um, but it really is, if if you look deeply, and it's about equity. Uh, we want to make sure that all families, all students have opportunity to participate, and how do we notice, and how do we ensure equity, and obviously, use them with the. Uh, as intended. Um, it's time, Christine and I, we, we're about to launch on. And we can put that on the record, so we do follow the assurances and 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 sometimes in my career, it's having to be an action item for a board. And to authorize the board chair to sign the assurances, um but as written this year, it is just to notice the board on an agenda, discuss it, and a superintendent sign it, so. Uh, I will be happy and honored to sign on behalf, and please be assured, assured that we do follow and commit and follow all the guidelines. To the best of our ability of our federal grants. Um, Christina and Amy and and Katie are pointing, last year I did uh a significant amount, I go back to grant work, and Christine and I worked collaboratively together this year. Christine's really an A D C character. But that's really, yeah, it's just a a notice, as we've seen before, we we're involved in, I I think I listed the federal projects that we're on, I D E A, ten four, ten two, we title one. But we do a good job, Christine does a really good job, Amy does a good job, Katie tracking and implementing these, they was better kids. Um, like the grant language stuff.
Public hearings to accept um um actually accept grant funds. Um, so you'll have a list of of all that, so lots of good information for next month.
So what are some of the major uh guidelines to qualify?
Uh, uh, title one, you have to notice, it's a big public notice, title two, A, it's big for professional development, we have to use it, and but. And as Christine and we remind each other, it is for admission, it doesn't, it's plant, our district responsibility, so you can't use it to create curriculum. Because that's a different responsibility, but you can use it to train teachers and then teacher collaboration, things like that. Um, the title four is a, it's sometimes technology, it's sometimes wellness, sometimes we transfer that money to title two A as efficient as we can. And I D E A, of course, is is uh individually, individuals with disabilities education, that's all the student service now.
So is that some of the stuff that gets reviewed under audit as well?
Yes.
So that's probably under the internal control portion of the thing, we we track and.
Yeah, we have monthly reporting requirements.
All flows through our system, so um what happens, uh Steve or I write the grant to request the fund. We, it's an entitlement grant, we're entitled to set a map, we write the grant to request funding for a set activity. The state reviews it to approve it, to ensure that it meets the requirements for that grant. Um, then we get approval, once approval happens, Katie creates an account for that activity. Or however many accounts, if it's multiple things, we're buying books and paying staff, there's two accounts created right in our budgeting software. Then we all go and create purchase orders as we need to, so everything still flows through us, we actually don't get paid till after we. We pay, after we've shown that we paid. Yeah, we then submit grant reports requesting the money, so it's a heavy lift for the business office, it's a lot of work.
I I guess the point once that if there was an issue with. It it would have shown up, but it, so even with that.
And the state audits us.
Yeah, so it's the federal, it's federal dollars, but it's administered by the New Hampshire Department of Education, so. So there's lots of eyes, and they've audited us before, the N H, uh the the D O E, which is now.
But but their audit would be random.
No, they tell us, if you, yeah.
But it, but it wouldn't be, it would be annual, though.
A large amount, then you have to have a single audit, which we actually have to have for Amherst, and we, we did just receive that.
What is it, like seven hundred fifty thousand or something?
Five hundred.
Five hundred few years, yeah.
Um, we just received that back for, you know, findings.
Yeah, so I guess the point being, if there was an issue where we weren't finding. They signed up on the guidelines, but there was an issue, it would probably show up.
Yeah.
In the audit, so. Even though it's great that he's signing it, but you can rest assured that.
Right.
Is being reviewed, so.
Yeah, even a few years ago, when one finding that came out was um that we had to do a better job of our time. Or reporting our time under grants for payment to staff, so we created a different timesheet for the summer. That is grant reporting timesheet and a payroll timesheet, we kind of combined two, so we weren't creating extra forms, and we've been using that for the past few years, so that. Um, better complies with the requirements for time reporting through grants, so that did come up in an audit. Um, as a suggestion or a hey, this is happening, you better start making this change.
Thank you. You can work on three different years grants, because of expiration date and times for districts, times for.
For grants.
Grants plus S R, it's it's possibly Christine and I and Amy.
Four grants open at one time.
Since you have one person that kind of.
I I do a lot of writing of the grants and how we're gonna use the money, Katie does a lot of the reporting and the tracking in the um accounts, yeah.
I D E A courses. Yeah, I have two A, Christine will put a main, last year, but on her this year. Federal one, buildings, Christine leads in the building, it's very collaborative, but it's 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 monument.
It's a lot to follow all the rules, and you know, with title one, there's significant rules for who qualifies, how do we. You know, uh make that determination, what's our criteria, there's lots of paperwork too, so it is a lot um. To manage and oversee, but once you know all the rules, it's faster.
Thanks. So that satisfied requirement, then it will put in the minutes, we'll have it, and we submit, we upload and actually email, we have to upload the grants, it's emailed to the, we have to eat it. So take care.
So going back to Matt's presentation, and he was talking about a letter of something. Do we get that to have on file? Is that?
It's in there.
It's in here, so it's. Yeah, he was telling, there was two different ones, that they weren't required to re- report, but the other one.
But they did.
We made the audit available to public, we probably have one person.
We know, but we do post it. Yeah.
Fascinating read.
To Georgie, up all night.
Steve's section was number two. Uh, okay, so it's. Running ahead, oh, we're right on schedule, look at that, seven, ten. Going to discuss the election results and all the fur, because I did not build out this. I can vary, I'll defer to Ms. Lawrence for anything that she wants to talk about.
We'll talk, I'll just talk a little bit about. Anybody? And so the um. That's why I'm a primary referral, primary referral, spreadsheet, these are pretty close.
Yeah.
So, um, it's it's, it was interesting, it was an interesting piece, um, the operating budget, obviously, um, failed by a little bit. Um, but the second highest vote getting was students with disability fund, which I thought was interesting. So it is, it, oh, it is disappointing. Um, there was significant work, significant education, the delivery of the public hearings. Um, and though there was a si- a huge amount, um what it does is it 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 continues the budget work as opposed to working on. Student learning, and you know, Amy, and Amy, instead of looking for projections and looking at, we're developing yet another budget. Um, because what the default is, the default is not a budget, the default's a calculation. And the reason why it's not a budget is because what's in the default is not enough to run our schools this year. Um, areas that Amy's already looking at, for example, we talked like this in the in the budget process, is transportation. So the amount in the default is the last approved budget, which was F Y twenty three here, so the F Y twenty three transportation rate. Um, you know, in in that year is how much is funded, but the gas goes up, mileage goes up, and the contract, so that's not in the problem. Uh, Amy and I are pretty frustrated, and and we're actually gonna work on in the summer meeting with our legislators to start looking at state law, but how you develop. Default, because it doesn't make any sense, but that's where we are, so one of the things that we're doing, um you know, we have two situations in in the S A U. Is we are committing to what we did this year is fifteen buses, now we have seventeen in the contract in the past, this year we can only find fifteen drivers. And so because we are going to, so two thousand twenty three at seventeen costs. To to, so we're going to fund two fifteen buses. So that savings will cover the amount pretty close uh to the actual necessary to run our buses in Mount Vernon. You picking up what I'm putting down, or might be a little funky? So, um, that is one now, um, this is where Amy and I, we, um, she was counting on, or hoping for, no, hoping for, not counting.
Hoping.
Hoping for G M R relief, I think I put that in board notes.
Yeah.
Because last year we got some nice G M R relief, well, because it happened once, and her, you know, that's, happens every year, my time fourteen years, it's happened once in fourteen, so I didn't expect it back to back. Um, and that's unfortunate, because that's easy low hanging fruit, so one of the things we have to do is look at, how do we cover F Y twenty four health insurance rates? Because they were less expensive in twenty three, which is in the budget for non-union folks. So we have to find, we have to cover that, so we have to look at where's some ways to cover that. One of the things that we spent a lot of time actually in the public hearing, talking and to deliver, talking about the necessity to increase compensation to attract and retain people. Facilities work in the food service area, and to be um to be, that's to be transparent. Uh, a a number of people have told me that the town of Mount Vernon approved raises an eight percent for their employees. There was, or eighteen, I'm I'm sorry, so significant, not one, there wasn't one position, I don't think in this budget, I got more than like five.
We checked some with five and.
Right, so and five was a reset to attract and retain.
Yeah.
And so when the community supported a a nine percent. And then we were trying to do the same thing, attract and retain, the goals was the same as the community, but for us to, and it's going to be hard to, can we cover that cost? Otherwise, and how do we attract and retain, because contracting out is is not long term a good solution to connect the type of service that we expect and what we need. Um, and that's the work over the next month, by next month, we'll bring back the. Um and that's the work over the next month. By next month, we'll bring back the, you know, we're preliminary, we're we're okay on transportation. We're covered by eighty two grand. Transportation is a piece of that. We're gonna look at um also look at compensation because the problem didn't go away about attracting, retaining people in environment where you can go to Target, where you can go to Dunk. You go to places forcing even more than what we have. Um but this is where we are. Good news was that all and all the um. Warren articles passed. Um the renovation and remember the order we were there that this board was very deliberate about the order. Um now the next question is is as Andy works through is will we have the fund balanced through twenty eight, the three twenty eight that Matt has talked about, right? We need the amount above to fund those. I think a little dose important. Those thirty five sixty. Twenty fifteen.
Yeah, it's one thirty.
Um so um she's Amy's digging in and she's working with, it's very collaborative, working with everyone in the S A U office in the buildings. Preliminary, it looks like we may be okay finding all and and getting some fund balance back. This is I'm an ish, Amy's not. Today we're ish stage and she'll put a finer point on it. But that's where we're at, finding out, do we have enough fund balance to cover these? And if we do. As I wrote, and we'll talk about Peter, just some board organization about taking a look at a facility committee to to support and lead the renovation edition study, which is like, that's exciting stuff. So um the respect to the board about the saving more money for future, taking a look at this is great. Like we will, we've they supported the health and dental insurance fund. That's great. That means we'll have a little bit breathing if someone changes my benefits and it's not a little like the increasing our our students with disabilities fund. Amy and I spent some time today. Our goal is always, and I feel very strongly, Mike will be on board, is we budget what we know. Like it is not good practice to budget more than what you need just in case. So you create a reserve fund. You're transparent about that. You put you you over time will get the students with disability fund where it needs to be. And we budget what we know for students with disabilities. And 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 I just want to make sure that that's where we're going, right? Because that's that's transparent. We don't shove an extra, you know, uh transportation. That's we don't build in what we don't need. Budget what you know. What you need, what you know, and you reserve everything else. And and this will help us build to that. So that's good news. But we'll be preparing. You know, Amy's, you know, in in two years, we've been working together. We passed two but in the S A U, it's all time, it's all work. Um we're either going to work, Amy's going to work on finding efficiencies and projections and improving our process and procedures or continue development of budgets. And see what we're what we're gonna cut now as it impacts kids. One is professionally rewarding and and the other is I'm not. I mean, it's just that simple, but we'll, you know, we'll do it like. It's hard. It's hard to continually. This was a very difficult budget process. S A U wide. We're still at it. Um but we're gonna do it. We're gonna do what's best for kids. Um very collaborative, Christine, Tom in this place. And in the next meeting, uh one thing is was really good. There weren't any positions. At stage here, right? All the way we issued contracts, we talked about that before the budget. We did it because they're all going to fall. So we're comfortable with it. And that's good for employee morale. It's good like no one's saying, oh, my God, am I gonna be my gonna get it? Um so that's good. Um but hopefully, you know, we'll learn, we'll we'll improve the process and next year we'll pass the budget because I have a little bit of experience now with successive defaults. Successive defaults. It's not, it's not good for your community. It's coming catch up. And Amber, we're in second of the year. But that was really it. If there are any questions, this is what we are talking about, we're thinking about Amy and I. I think I think we met every day this week. You know, to talk about this one or the other one and develop it. And leadership was so. Gloves came off today a little bit.
The jersey may have died out.
And it's just because we all care about, we all have priorities, want to make it work. As opposed to we're trying what what stays in as opposed to how can we grow and improve. Those are two very different conversations with very devoted people. You won't find more people devoted to doing what's best for kids and having high quality. And I hate to be the guy that's saying we don't have the money. But uh vote elections unconscionable. Vote unconscionable. But overall, by the four to five. But I I appreciate your service and I work on it.
Well, I think it's important. I'm speaking for myself, not the board, that, you know, we keep hearing about being transparent, being transparent, which. I think we are. Not just here, but. In the district. But we need to be. I think it's imperative that we be transparent when we don't have the money for something and we have to cut or trim or give back. That. This is why. Not because we don't want to do it. We don't think there's a need to do it. We don't have the passion to do it. It's the fact that we don't have the nickels to do it. So. That would be my only comment. Personally is.
So what you can expect next month, um unfortunately I haven't experienced doing this. Um is you'll have um a a pretty detailed file of. The proposed budget, the default budget, and then remanded budget, and then I'll have that aggregated into a form that it's easy for you to see. To see exactly, you know, what the differences are between those. Three budgets that we now are looking at as opposed to um as opposed to just the two. So you'll be able to see what. You know, what we really have to fund that wasn't in. The isn't in the default budget um and then where there are choices to be made. So and it's mo- mostly probably going to come down to um. To wages and benefit adjustments for the non-union. That's going to be the biggest decision that you folks will need to make. So and and I work with um. Christine and curriculum, uh Tom. I work with the tech staff. I work with facilities. Um special ed is is funded anyway, but I I work with. Everybody and say, one last look, is there anything that we can do? Um some in some cases. The proposed might be lower than than the default. But you have to be careful because it can be the flip in some other area and they might need those funds. To fund where something is lower. So um. So it's it's a pretty complicated. Process, but we're very collaborative and we'll end up, I'll end up with a spreadsheet that we'll discuss next month.
And then um the funds, if the funds are available for hundreds for the fund balance into the in into the trust, into the expendable funds, that's a July one. And we'll know. And then uh we can start access and so then we'll talk about. The firm, you know, for the all that on study, but that's it. It's not an outing because we don't know. And I would recommend we could have been having a community based education on the committee. To to take a look at to what would it means to have, right? There's really three things in that we're looking at. Expanding for enrollment, looking at and keeping something. And I and I think something that Amy and I talking about is 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 what's best for Mount Vernon, have the whole preschool program. It's something that Amy and I talked about quite a bit right now. It's it's based on the tuition costs and the funds is it what's best for kids also, or you know, but we don't know yet, but that's it. Those are some pretty days and talk about. Cool beans?
So quick question for this year's. Budget slash finances. Do I recall that we're going to be short seventeen to twenty grand? In the food department? Is that, do I, am I remembering? We're gonna have a shortfall in our. Our lunch program.
Food service.
Because of revenue.
Yeah, but.
Cost.
Next on the agenda.
Yeah, but we we have fund balance.
So we'll talk about that.
We can.
To cover that.
Are you gonna bring out a bit momentary?
Yeah, I don't think I have. Food service on here, but.
That's how you let that in.
It's just projected fund balance and.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
The floor is yours, Amy, for a report on.
So this is just as a. The end of March and I preface this with this is. Still rough. We we don't know everything. Things can change, but at this point we're projecting. A fund out of um close to one hundred and seventy five thousand. So we'll be able to fund all the Warren articles. Uh which is great news. So we have uh revenue at seventy nine nine projected and expenditures at ninety four eight. Um so just a few notes on the major categories. So local revenues, that's. Tuition interest uh and refund of prior year expenditure. The state is our special ed aid uh that came in uh higher than anticipated about forty six thousand. So that was great. The federal is uh Medicaid. Reimbursement. Our office works really hard to try to get all those dollars back and I'm hoping that we'll get more. Um on the expenditure side or uh. This is projected at a loss primarily due to a long term sub. Um for someone who is who is out and our substitute line is over budget as well. Kind of the opposite problem of last year. For special ed, that projection, uh that was. Uh recently discovered that we have savings and tuition, which is great. Uh the interscholastic is we're projecting uh and there may be some more in there, but some unused funds in close to events. Uh student services, that's some savings and O T P T speech path. Uh instructional services, that's an anticipated savings and professional development. The administrative line, that is a correction for the uh food service district allocation. And then there's a couple of small things. The building and grounds uh. Deficit is due to an electricity production, so higher utility costs. And the transportation is a savings in special ed blessing. So. We're in, we're. Decent shape for this point in the year. Uh we had more last year, but that was that big savings in in the regular tuition, but. But we're doing okay. We can fund, at this point we project we can fund more on this. So I'll come back each each month in May and June and then. Tighter and tighter. Um I've. Probably not recommend end of year projects, but at this level, um but. It's um we we do have a list of those, so if things drastically change, we can present those in June and you can make a decision.
So the electrical, I thought we have a power contract. So did the rate go up or?
Yeah, it. I can talk to Roger and get. Yeah.
I thought we were still under contract.
Yeah.
He wasn't concerned at that point.
Yeah.
So unless there was some significant usage.
Yeah. It does, but I can get, I can get it now.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I thought we recovered in that.
Yeah. So that's where we're at. So, yeah, and we don't anticipate needing a transfer for food service because we have one balance to cover any deficit.
And that can carry over in that one department.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. So we'll keep keep looking at it and the next month you'll have. Made projections and um a recommended default budget.
Good work, Amy.
That's a lot of work. Yeah, right. Wish that budget passed. One thing that I heard. Kind of as a reasoning for why people didn't vote for it was specifically the unexpended fund balance.
Yeah.
That year after year, we have these funds left over at the end and we're able to use them for these. Purposes, you know, set of worth and whatever the warrants are. And so the perception is that. Even though we say it's a lean budget, that it's not as lean as it could be. And so if there's only an eighty four thousand dollar difference approximately, what's the big deal?
Yeah.
Um and so I think. My takeaway from this year was I think we need to do a better job of explaining what the impact is. If it goes into default, like for instance, the contractual obligations with transportation. I found out that a large portion of our community really did not click with that. Um and despite a last. Ditch push on my part, I I don't think. Um that that made it through to as many people as it needed to. I mean, we saw that on Harvard and Chatter.
Yeah.
That it just people didn't understand that piece of it, that there were contractual obligations in there. That can't be in there.
Right. And and the G M R for non-union.
Right, so that's another. So I think I think hitting the pain points maybe next time, just being really clear, being more clear on what does it mean if? I think that gets us a little bit closer to deeper transparency with what what does it mean if you don't pass this budget? Because it's not painless. It's not painless. You're working really hard.
The transportation piece is huge because there are people that I talked to that aren't. That try and stay pretty well educated that didn't understand that transportation, despite it being obligation, is not. I know, in there.
And health insurance, yeah.
Right, which seems so counterintuitive. It's really challenging for, I mean, it's only for the non-union, but still. And why is, I mean, who do we talk to at the state? Who do you talk to about that? Because it feels really unfair. Community of our size to have to manage that. And we get legal advice on that. So I, you know, confirmed with legal to say that that's that is how it works and.
There were lots of bills on the other end. Like um about like one of the things that we, if we had a staffing issue. With what you put in the default for the staffing, do you put the former contract or the new value? And you need to put in the two thousand twenty three value of the default. And they were trying, there's some, there was some um legislative action to reduce that. But if that means it tightens the grip on public heads much. Though the fund balance question, like you don't really need that eighty four thousand because you can just do the fund balance. And that's a very common train. But you, we can't spend money. In September, because we don't know what that fund balance is in June.
Right.
We can't hire someone at two dollars more an hour to what we wanted to. Because we may not. And it's not better practice to say, okay, we'll have a meeting, we'll spend, we'll drop three hundred grand in the last minute return nothing. So we think we spent that money. You know, that's just an interesting, anyway, being fiduciary responsible in returning unused funds to the taxpayer. It's almost like you're being penalized for that.
Right. But I think in that conversation, what you just said is what I think people need to hear. Like if you write that down. And it can be pushed out to the public, I think. I think that is helpful because people don't get it.
And the towns can carry that fund balance. So they have a buffer that they can use for, you know, um. Years going out and that's not the school districts can't do that, so.
We haven't gone for it.
Right.
I mean, we talked about that retain action and in that, all this is on the table. It's great, great lesson. Amy and I will talk about Mike, uh Mike will too. It is the, you know, one of the things that I led, I think one of my letters was, it works here. The outcomes, the connections, the present, it works here. And we'll we'll be okay. It's eighty three thousand dollars. We're gonna run fifteen buses. That's now. But successive defaults absolutely put our ability to deliver a public promise of public education on Vernon. Um maybe the next year is very, very important because once we start looking at, I say this all the time, right now, one of our districts, we're gonna pay for. And at in twenty four chicken dinners and twenty two. At the time where it's the most inflation ever in my time as a building or district leader. We're going, we're frozen in a lot of our areas, our electricity, our health insurance. Our, you know, in in inflationary for some of our supplies on the twenty two funding, because it's second to fall. And Amy and I talked already. We can't lose another budget. We can't go three years. We can't go two years in Mount Vernon. Two years in Mount Vernon is a sign that says, oh, and it puts everything, it doesn't change.
Well, that's my.
In secondary default, it it me too.
I mean, asking the question, I asked the question, what did you need to know that you didn't? What did you need to know? What didn't you hear from the board? What didn't you hear from me that you needed to hear? And. What I shared with you is what I've heard so far.
And that's what the people that you were able to ask here, I think there's just such a big issue with outreach and sticker shock. And I think. You know, and this is where like if I could choose how to communicate, like I would make like an infographic and like here's the what happens and here's what happens if you don't. And I don't know if that's something we're allowed to do. But like people just sometimes need it distilled down to something that they can consume and retain and then can then go to further details if they want. Sometimes at least getting those like main points in a very digestible way. Because that's all they have time for. I mean, so many parents are like, I I I basically like bullied. But a friend of mine to get out of the house and go vote, because I was like, please go like, but they're tired and they're home with their kids and it's really hard and like. There's a good portion of the town that's just. You know, I strung out and exhausted and like it's so hard to dig through all of this. And then when you do encounter it, you're relying on um conversations that get you railed on chatter. Or um assumptions based off of what someone else is telling you, and then you don't understand the nuance and. That at least would be something tangible to try to redirect it if that's something that's allowed.
Yeah, we work to do, but the town adjacent to where I live has a sixteen percent budget.
Sixteen? Wow.
The town adjacent to where I live has a sixteen percent education school budget.
I thought that's what you said.
Very, um, very few budgets did pass in the country. Communities understood the impact of inflation, which did why seven or eight, and that, because it's, it's, it's it happens, it's, it's, right, so, um, we're going to work on it.
But what's stunning to me is that the town, the town budget was really not questioned, I mean, if you, the town budget was not questioned and and to be frank, it's kind of disgusted me.
Yeah.
That that did not get questioned, and yet ours failed by twenty-one votes. The select, the selectmen have a nine percent raise, they're getting twenty-three hundred dollars stipend each per year. Let that just settle in your bones.
No, I get it, and 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 we'll, and we'll dig in and and we'll do more, but yeah, um, I get it. Um, because, uh, Amy and I and Christine and Tom are going to be spending time trying to figure out what survives and I'll try to increase education. And I get to do a choice.
Great to have you all.
Thank you, no, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your passion and commitment. And, uh, Mr. Bees, do you, how many non-union, uh, people been impacted? Um, our, our custodial staff, office staff, and, uh, air, air professionals, but not all of them were completely out of whack.
Right.
Um, so we had, it was, it was custodial staff and food service, I think, were the major areas that we needed out, because we were struggling with those positions.
That's happening, also University of New Hampshire is having major issues, our custodial staff way understaffed and having really hard time filling positions.
And it's in all other places and, yeah, more.
I'm happy that those positions are becoming, more, maybe more of a living wage. Even though the town decided to do some significant. I think it's a secondary role.
Yes, it is.
Have you noticed any change in your morale? Um, we, um, we, we have, it had, we're still not done seeing if we can do what we need to do to attract or retain people, we'll make some stuff do, once we dig in and 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 turn over. I'm hoping that we can do some stuff with some of the positions that most need. Um, I'm hoping they get in.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. So, did we just cover staffing?
No, staffing, um, and it was a very late addition today, I apologize, but yesterday, I'm pretty sure it was yesterday, my days, um, I received notice that Kim Devon has submitted her, um, uh, letter of resignation. Um, uh, she's finishing the year, but she will not, um, be back next year, she has an opportunity to, um, um, travel and spend time with spouse and and platter, and I will share the letter, I, I think it was late and all this stuff, but um, but one thing I appreciate, she reserved the right request to come back and work. So that's wonderful, and it was heartfelt about the relationships. And the support, um, so we, um, if you want to accept your letter, letter of resignation with regret, that would be, um, a wonderful. Uh, I've got a chance, as, as her leadership and V E A work with her closely this year, and I've enjoyed learning and working with and learning from her, and I appreciate what she's done. Last year, I did work with nurses last year, you know, COVID stuff, and and they're all so competent and so committed, Kim is certainly. But that was it, so and I apologize for late addition, but we thought, because they'll meet for another month, we want to start advertising and posting, and she
Yeah, it was a hard decision for her.
Yeah.
Which is very sad to have to say goodbye, but it's right for her and her family.
So you're welcome to make a quick motion, regret.
We do the motion to accept resignation of Kim Devon with regret.
We'll make the motion.
A second.
Although some favor.
With regret.
And appreciation, thanks.
Said a lot of heavy lifting.
Yeah, surely has.
Yes, all of them. Yes, that's a great comment, Paige.
So we're up to our second public input of two, um, seeing nobody in the audience. Do we have anybody online? We're only online.
I would like a moment, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So, um, I actually made it to my family and effective after the next Mount Vernon board meeting on May fourth, I will be resigning my position on the board. Um, because we accepted a job opportunity, um, overseas, so also, we're very regretfully. Yeah, same, very exciting, but very sad.
Um, well, thank you, and so you'll be at the next meeting, yes?
Yes, well, I'll be remote the next month, because I'll actually be in San Francisco at a conference, but, um, but yes, and I'll be at the next talking online as well, the, um, S A U, yeah.
Okay, I'll prepare some transition documents for you and board policies and stuff that we do, but thank you for your service.
I appreciate everybody, it's been an awesome experience, for sure.
Do we need to do a motion to accept or?
No, not for this one. And then we'll, we'll talk to you all, the proper place for us, now of the policy.
Alright, very good.
If we don't accept it, yeah.
It will be a six-hour time difference, um, so it'll be about two AM right now.
There, there is a residency requirement.
Just say, Terry Beam did it from Italy. Three in the morning.
So for two years.
So. You just have to, the bar's been set.
If I was independently wealthy, I would, uh, be keeping my house, but, uh, alas, I am not. But I am very grateful for the opportunity I had when the board allowed me to fill a position and then, um, and then the town supported me in allowing me to continue the work, so I'm just very grateful for the opportunity.
And hits, just keep coming.
Um, do we have any, no? We, I do not, I just put, in case somebody came up, we do not, everything is been done in public.
So, uh, seven forty-two, I'll take a motion. To a juror?
I'm making a motion.
Make that one.
Okay, we want a second, that case, second by George, all in favor?